Do we have questions from the council now, or do you want to go to the sign up sheet? Would you like to, is there anybody that does not want to wait for a sign up sheet? Well, let's answer questions. Okay, let's just see if people are signed up. Is there any other, this, the application, the presentation, the formal presentation of this request is over, this, right? Are you, there's no other, are there any other people that would like to?
Well, I certainly didn't want to, I can certainly walk you through our entire application. If you, any of you feel that that's necessary, I'm glad to do that. We have exhibits that include all our tax liabilities, measurements of the trucks, capacity of the trucks. I think, I think this memo that we just received is a little bit confusing because the way the, at least at our initial review, you certainly don't add up all those numbers to get to a total of what it would cost the town to take on our 11 units. It's really a total of $2,904, which is actually $1,000, more than $1,000 less than what we're paying privately to have the exact same services.
Okay, why don't we go to the sign up sheet? And then we have questions, you can address, things that you've either referred to in the presentation or address them, okay?
Okay. And are other members of the community, if they wanted to address?
Absolutely. Once we're done with the sign up sheet, we will open it up for anybody who would like to speak.
Okay.
Lori Waugh-Haftig. Did you sign up to speak? Or did you sign up because you're here? Okay. So you're here. Good to see you, Lori. Ronald, is it Pearson?
Pearson, that's correct.
Yes, are you also here? Nice to see you. Gregory Farpen?
Harper.
Okay, would you like to speak? Any, I mean, you need to come up to the, to the mic and you need to state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
My name is Gregory Harper. I reside at 645 Prospect Avenue, the Loomis Woolley Development, and I live in unit 11 with my wife Karen. We've been living here at Loomis Woolley for two years. We pay what we think is a rather large tax bill each year, and I think it's only fair that we get the same services that other homeowners who pay the same level of taxes that we pay, that we get those same level of services.
Thank you very much, Mr. Harper. Ian Warhaftig. Would you like, would you like to come up and speak, or are you just?
I'm here as well.
Again, name and, name, name and address for the record.
Don't push the button, right? Okay, thank you, thank you. My name is Ian Warhaftig. I reside at 645 Prospect Avenue in unit number five. I'm probably along with my wife Lori, the oldest resident at Loomis Woolley. We've gone through a few ups and downs with the real estate market, as probably most of you are aware. The only thing I wanted to add, that Greg was saying, you know, that we do pay a fairly, good sized tax bill, we also don't get other services that the town provides to other residents. We don't have snow removal, we don't have our leaves picked up in the fall, and we're not asking for any of those things. We're just asking for what we think is a fair request. There's nothing structurally in the way of having town trucks come through, and it seems like a relatively simple thing to swap out the bins we're paying for and put some in from the town and collect our garbage. I have faced this issue before when I lived at another, what was it, private urban development, and unfortunately, we weren't granted garbage, or snow removal. We had garbage removal, though. So it's really confusing to me in terms of who gets what in the town. And I think that is pretty upsetting as a taxpayer to see that there are some special circumstances which are somewhat elusive in terms of who gets what. And we're asking for something, I don't think we're asking for too much, and I would really appreciate your support in providing this service for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Waugh-Haftig. Nina Donovan?
I'm, my name is Nina Donovan. I'm a resident of 645 Prospect Avenue, unit 14. And I would add, or really sort of point out something which is one of the attachments that you have, or exhibits you have in your packet, and that is the fact that there is a town, Town of West Hartford regulation that says residential condominium, private school, church, and synagogue collection should be, is to be provided by the Town of West Hartford. It was the language of the Special Development District when our association was originally built in 2008, which was included. But if you go back to what exists as a town regulation, we can see that the town has intended or is doing that for other condominiums, and that we feel that we ought to be able to go back and be treated under that regulation rather than have that aspect of the, of the verbiage of the Special Development District continue to prevail. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Donovan, Mr. Donovan, Walter Wang.
I don't think so. I think, oh, many persons spoke in the article.
Thank you, Mr. Wang. Is there anybody else from, that's the end of the sign up sheet, is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak to this public hearing? Okay, so now I'd like to open up questions, actually, Mr. Van Winkle, would you like to give us a little history on what, what this is all about?
Actually, not so easy. Attorney Laer and I spent some time today trying to figure out the history of, of our picking up or not picking up garbage at condominiums. It partially appears to be a historical thing that after a certain date, we stopped doing that. The town, as we began to approve Special Development Districts, particularly for condos, we began to shift to those condo associations, the costs of snow plowing and garbage pickup and whatnot, as part of their zoning approval. So although our ordinance says we pick up garbage at condominiums, when we adopt a Special Development District zone, we put conditions on it for all sorts of things. And one of those conditions placed on this and others was that they provide their own garbage service. And as I, you all have John's memo, which he gave to us, sent to me today, he cites that we're, we do pick up garbage at 33 condominiums. There's another 33 that we do not pick up. Historically, there's condominium associations that have, and this goes back several years, though, that have petitioned us to, to have the garbage picked up at their association, and we've denied that. So, and the issue isn't so much the cost here, we estimate the capital expenditures as $1,320, that's buying of the new cans for this property, and the annual recurring costs are $1,584 plus our tip fees, which is, you know, $64 or $5 a ton. They're not going to generate a lot of tons of garbage either. So the impact on the town's financials for picking this garbage up is not much, but quite clearly, if you were to step back on this, we really do need to take a look at how we handle other condominiums, or whether we would step back on those, and if I were in another condominium, I'd come before you and request the same thing. So it, it opens up the question of picking up garbage at potentially 33 more condo projects, not just one. So that's the intent of John's memo. I'd be glad to answer questions if you have them.
Thank you. Mrs. Hall?
If a condo association was formed today, but not through the SDD process, would the condo association be responsible for their own trash pickup?
No, they would not.
Okay. Is, is there a difference between condo association that has private roads versus one that does not in terms of the town's liability?
In terms of liability? I'm not sure.
So I'm just thinking if there's, if, if you've got trucks that are going into a private road, into a private condo association, and something happens, you know, does the town have liability? And it looks like Mr. Laer is ready to answer that question.
Sorry, there you go.
The short answer is yes, there, there is a potential liability issue, the same liability issue that a commercial trash hauler would have for potentially doing damage, that sort of thing. I think one thing that we have to remember is that the, at some point, Mr. Van Winkle mentioned trash collection, snow plowing services, the traditional town services that are provided. Snow plowing services and trash collection are a little bit different because we can actually damage somebody's private street when we're snow plowing. I think that's the historic reason for not plowing private roads in condo developments. Trash collection's not quite the same risk, but there is a potential risk there.
Just to answer your question a little more fully, you know, if there was an existing condo project where they saw it, you, you accepted this tonight, and then someone else came forward and said, "We'd like it, too," we would need to make sure that we could safely pick up that dumpster that they have with our equipment, with how we handle things. So if we couldn't do that, then we'd have to ask them to make a change, an adjustment, remove parking, I don't know what that might be. Obviously, they're all picking up garbage now, but we are a little more careful standard with garbage pickup because of those liabilities.
Okay, so, is, is there then a difference between whether a condo association has regular bins or versus dumpsters? Does the town pick up at any condo associations that have dumpsters instead of our regular bins? Are we performing that?
We pick up both of them.
You do?
Yep. Again, I think it is after a certain period in our history that we decided that we were going to shift these costs to the condo associations that were being built. You earlier asked if they didn't come as an SDD. Pat found one today. You want to just describe, on the corner of Wall Bridge, there was a condo?
So today, I went back and I started with 645 Prospect Avenue, which is SDD number 124, and I worked backwards, looking at the conditions of approval for SDDs. And looking back chronologically, there were a number of Special Development Districts which have exactly the same, what we have started to call our boilerplate conditions, minor variations, but none having to do with trash collection. All of those, in the years immediately prior to the Loomis Woolley project, were commercial, commercial properties, mostly on Farmington Avenue, Oscar, Dr. Oscar Gonzalez's dental office on South Quaker Lane, other projects like that. If we go back to the approval of Somerset, the condos at the corner of Albany and King Philip Drive, and I think that was 20, or 2006, if I remember correctly, I failed to write it down, that has exactly the same condition in it. That is the most recent prior new SDD with exactly the same condition. Looking back in time further, I found that we got to a point where we had, before we had developed these boilerplate standard conditions, and I saw a number of SDDs that had a different condition that says trash collection shall be limited to the hours between 7:00 a.m. and XPM, which sort of implies that it's going to be private trash collection, but doesn't actually say that. And examples there are Hamilton Heights, Quaker Green, well, I take that back, Hampshire House has nothing, Quaker Green had nothing, 1401 Farmington Avenue is the, is the other one that had limits on hours of collection. Quaker Green had nothing, and this is a sort of a good example of the other scenario on this. Quaker Green, if you'll recall, started as an SDD as the former Colico site, a commercial site. It went through a number of iterations over the years, and eventually was approved as what is now Quaker Green. And in 2000, the condition was added that they're responsible for their own collection. So what we, we see out there is three different scenarios. One is new SDDs, condition imposed, the boilerplate condition says it's on you. Two is they morph over time, and at some point, either the condition is added, à la Quaker Green, or there is no condition at all because nobody ever thought about it as they've morphed from commercial to residential, or from apartment to condo. And the third, which Ron alluded to, is the condo project at the corner of Wall Bridge and Farmington Avenue, former Unity Church site that was converted or torn down and built as condos. That was an as of right project. That required no SDD, no zone change. It was a multifamily zone, and it was built as of right. It went to the town planner, site plan review, no conditions of approval because the town planner is not authorized to impose conditions of approval. And they are not bound by any condition, therefore they get trash collection, and I assume we're providing it. One of the things that's happened is, over the years, as Public Works has gotten away from providing it, we're not 100% certain that they're even providing it to all of the condo associations where there's no condition of approval prohibiting it. We're still in the process of trying to figure that out.
And just sort of as a follow up to all of those, can you confirm that there's no difference in the tax rate that any of these condos are paying to reflect the difference in services?
We don't look at that issue when we put a value on a property, a value is placed on a property based on what the market pays for that property. If the market were to look at two condominium projects that are identical, and one had to pay for their trash pickup and one didn't, presumably the market would say there's some adjustment. But as, we don't, as a practice, when we value something, we don't look at these issues. We look at what the market says.
Yeah, and I was just curious whether any evaluation had been done to see if there was sort of reflected in their market value, but.
Well, and in the, in the way that, that condos are bought and sold, one of the factors that any purchaser looks at is the condo fees. And trash collection is built into the condo fee, so at a very broad theoretical level, that gets baked into what somebody would be willing to purchase for the property, which then converts to their tax valuation.
Thank you, Mrs. Hall. Mr. Davidoff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One of the arguments that's been presented this evening was that the condition of approval in SDD 125 was not discussed, negotiated, or specifically designated, but instead represents boilerplate language typically included in any SDD approval. While that may be a valid argument, I would say that many of the conditions which appear in our SDD approval boilerplate language don't get discussed around the table because they're, they're quite lengthy, it's several pages, and we don't spend hours on every particular item unless the applicant has specifically pointed to one saying, "This would be burdensome to us, we need some relief from that condition, can I get a waiver from that condition?" And that usually has been the way that this has been the history around the table with respect to zoning applications in the time that I've sat here. I do not sit on this particular one, whether a member of the TPZ or a member of the council. So I, when I look at that and think of that argument, I sort of say, well, it doesn't really gain much weight here this evening with respect to that, because that's usually how things are done. So as to why it wasn't raised that night, there was an opportunity to raise it, but obviously it wasn't. The other thing that I think that is a little bothersome is that when one purchases a piece of property that's part of an association, I think one of the questions that one would, would raise that when they do their diligence would be, what common expenses would I be responsible for with respect to this particular condominium unit? And I think it's been outlined that there'd be landscaping and physical, whether it be porches, or decks, or roofs, or trash, or things of that nature, would all fall into that same HOA expense log. So it's carrying to heart to say that we're not aware of what our homeowner's fee takes into account. Then with respect to the, how we treat trash at, at other religious institutions, in 2009, there was a council action under a budget option that basically eliminated the collection of trash from religious institutions when the economy went south, and the council was looking for measures to, to save money. And what has not happened, and as the speaker this evening pointed out, is our ordinances have not been updated to reflect the reality of the situation that took place in 2009. But the record is clear from the council discussion around the table at budget adoption night, that the council did not put in its budget the collection from religious institutions and notified, made steps to notify them to, that they would need to hire a private hauler to, to make those things. And then the last thing that I'd like to talk about, but I don't really have like somebody on the applicant side to discuss this with, it's kind, it's a unique application this evening, is the argument that this is unreasonable, unfair to this particular residence, and then one has been just pointed out, there's 33 other potential properties in town that could basically make that same argument, and then if we augment the cost of all these different parcels, this one being $3,474, and not knowing what the financial impact is to all these other people, I don't, I don't really know what that number is in the aggregate at this point. So by granting a, in our case, by eliminating or deleting this condition, we could be inviting many more properties, condo stations come before us, looking for the same type of relief. So I think that's important to get on the record. And then when we break down the cost here, and I think this is important, by the applicant's own testimony, it was $3,474 a year was what they incur, which basically points out to $318 a year per unit, which is $26.50 a month for trash removal. So we have to think, is that unreasonable, unfair to think that that burden ought to be incurred by those who have opted to take on, take on that expense? I do understand and appreciate their argument that they said that other people who live in West Hartford pay taxes, get, get this service, but I think there may be a distinction in the type of ownership that is made in the sense that from day one, when this group organized as a property ownership thing, there was knowledge as to what expenses would be incurred on their behalf, just as there's knowledge when one purchases a home in West Hartford, they know that the taxes are this, and the taxes cover trash collection, that people thought we did vacuum leave, we don't do that anymore, but do we do bag leave? So there's a set of assumptions or things that are the norm in the community at the time. I think that's important to just point out. So I don't know if the applicant wants to add any more to their testimony, but those are the key points I've garnered from their application this evening, and the arguments that have been made in the history as to what has happened with respect to like properties in town, and I think that's important to get on the record this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davidoff. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to follow the deputy mayor, my thought is that the only issue we would have moving forward, well, the issue we would have moving forward is that we do have these 33 other condominiums where we don't currently pick up trash, and if they were to ask us to do so, assuming that they could, they had the physical ability of the trucks to come on the property and all the items that the town manager mentioned, we'd have an issue saying no, because basically we're using and exercising our discretion here. So we would be in a position where we would be choosing winners and losers, and I don't think that's a good position for our town to have, especially since we have sort of agreed upon terms with the condominiums that are in existence. That's the first thing. And the second thing is that, you know, as a body, we're always talking about affordability of the town, and, you know, we'd have disagreements as to what that looks like, but that is a concern, and there's always this rule of unintended consequences, and if we do cover the trash pickup here, will we have to do it the others? What financially would that look like? And I think we'd be boxing ourselves in, in a way that wouldn't behoove us financially moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Dodd?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Except in the situation, I guess this would be to you, maybe Ron, except in the situation of other traditional condo units, are there many situations where trash trucks are going on private roads to pick up trash in the town? As I look at the diagram here, the trash truck would be required to go off public roads, go onto a private road that's owned by the condo to pick up the trash, and then go back on a public road. And I don't believe they pick up typically at commercial units, or we already said they don't pick up at religious institutions. Are there other situations where that happens?
Well, you're, a couple of points in your question. It was, many years ago, we stopped collecting trash at commercial. We used to collect trash at commercial. It was, as the deputy mayor spoke in 2009, that the council decided to stop the pickup at religious institutions and private schools. We were also picking those up, and, and that ended. There are a number of private streets in West Hartford with single family homes on them. We still pick up garbage, single family home, private street, they, these are generally older, a great example, Stoner, off of Stoner Drive, are all those private ways. We still go down those streets and pick up garbage. And maybe a corollary, too, is that, you know, from time to time over the years, a neighborhood that has single family homes and it's got a private street, comes to us and said, "We'd like you to take our street over." It's deteriorated, it's going to cost us a lot to repair it, we want the town to take it over. And we've denied those over and over again over the years because as, as a private street, it's their responsibility to take care of. They only come when they realize that their street really needs significant repair. So it's, it's, there are private streets, and we certainly go on private streets. So that's not a thing. And there are condominium associations that we do collect, and we certainly go into those condominium associations.
Thank you, Mr. Dodge. Anybody else? Okay, is there anything else, Mrs. Cedar, that you, oh, sorry, Mr. Laer?
Sorry, I just wanted to add two points, just to complete the record, because I failed to mention it. This SDD was approved on March 28, 2006. Just to give you the timeline, the hearing opened on February 14, was continued to February 28, was continued a third time to March 28, the night of the adoption. So there were three hearings. In the, in the old days, some of you may remember the good old days of your Friday In the old days, some of you may remember the good old days of your Friday council packets, where you actually physically got your packet delivered to you on the Friday before a meeting. In the Friday packet of March 24, the Friday before your potential adoption night, the draft conditions of approval were sent to you with a cover memo from our office as a set of conditions for your consideration. So, they obviously didn't exist on the 14th or the 28th, the first two nights of the hearing. I went back today and read the transcript of March 28, and there is no mention of the conditions in the transcript of the hearing, and other than Mr. O'Brien commenting on them when they were moved for adoption at your deliberations that night, there is no mention of them during your deliberations. There's no discussion of any of the conditions, let alone the trash collection condition. So, it's clearly clear that they were adopted, it's clear that they were out there on the Friday before the adoption, no objection from the applicant, no anything, no comment at all from the applicant. So, I wanted to mention that, number one. Number two, Ron used a very good example of the lanes off Stoner Drive. When we look at things like trash collection, like, you know, this situation, road plowing, that sort of thing, it's very rare in West Hartford that you have a specific day you can point to and say, "That's when the decision was made." We have an evolution. In the 20s and 30s, when those lanes were created, it was very common that roads were private. And in those days, the town plowed private roads. We stopped doing that. In those days, we picked up trash on private roads. We still do some of that, where there's no association. But where there's an association in place, we don't plow private roads, we don't pick up trash, at least half the time, apparently. So, there has been some kind of evolution, and in some cases, it's literally project by project or street by street. So, I don't want you to think that there is sort of a uniform or standard rule here when it's really very much more complicated than that.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Winogre.
On that left, thank you for that history, and thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm concerned about the question marks, both in terms of the application certainly, and the idea that there's, you know, the 33 in one hand and 33 on the other is uncomfortable. I don't think we can resolve that through this application. But I'm, so making it 34, 32 doesn't make that, make me feel any better, it would be better for this association, but it wouldn't fix the bigger problem of not really having a clear set of guidelines as to which places are covered and which are not. So, I do think, you know, I don't, I'm personally, I can't see supporting this particular application because it doesn't solve that problem, but I do recognize, and I hope people see it, there is something wrong here, that we don't have these defined. And I would like to figure out a way to get a better plan, to know, you know, why there is these distinctions. Now, it may simply be the difference is timing and bargaining strength, and it may well be that at a certain point, you know, it's like we give, we don't do it, but if you gave tax abatements, and why is that tax less, well, because we gave an abatement, if it's, we don't do. But if it became a point in which we were, you know, a developer came and the condition we might otherwise be hesitant to adopt, but at that time, we had the ability to say, "Okay, you'll pay more," such as Blueback, for example, where we actually created a division that pays higher taxes, you know, that may well be a fair answer. But I do suspect that not all of this history is sort of rationally explainable, and I do think it needs further investigation to see whether or not there are, you know, some other conditions we can set forth, whether it's size, whether it's access, whether it's condition, I mean, like, in this case, for example, I mean, if the trash cans were being brought to Prospect, I would see a whole less reason to object to it than having a private driveway. So, I do think we need to look at this more. I mean, not, you know, if this is defeated tonight, not be the end of those discussions. I do have one, oh, never mind, I think that, let's figure out a way, again, I'd like to know about the other 66 condos, and like, see if we can come up with some better rules. The one question I actually have is for Pat. If we determined that there was some other standard we wanted to apply, that condos of a certain size could be, we could pick up, if that were the outcome of a discussion, would it have to, would it require changes to SDDs, or could we sort of have a policy of waiver based on a certain set of standards? Which I can't imagine what they are right now, I'm not going to try to create those, but if we did draw a line somewhere, could we do that, or would it require going in and amending SDDs?
The short answer is, it's a good question.
Okay. Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
And honestly, I'm not sure I can tell you the answer tonight.
Okay.
And I think you've alluded to it in your sort of prelude to the question, I'm not sure that it's as simple as writing a policy that will fit everything. And the best example I can give you, and I'm going to not name the project, there is a specific project in town where the developer asked for us to approve private streets. And they asked for us to approve it, private streets, because they wanted to make the streets narrower than our town standards required, they wanted to make the turn radiuses on the streets tighter, because it made it easier to fit their houses on their lots, and they wanted to not provide curbing that is required by our standards. Well, that did a bunch of things. One, our trash trucks can't get in and go around the curves. Two, it's actually, for some of our larger fire equipment, it's a bit of a problem, but our plows can't get around it in the wintertime. And all of that was done by way of an SDD, where they came in and said, "Approve this and waive all of those standards, and we'll take care of it." Because we'd rather have that and have the quaint neighborhood feel that it evokes than have all of those services. That was a very deliberate decision, and one which now, if the council said, "Well, we're going to approve condos of a certain size, or if they're single-family, or whatever," I'm not sure we could provide that service there, even if you did adopt it by policy. So, I think it requires more research than saying, "Yeah, a policy will do it." I think we need to be more careful than that.
Thank you very much, and yes, I'm absolutely not trying to draft
No, no, no.
A policy in my head, because I have no doubt that it would get very complicated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winogre. Mr. Barnes?
Thank you. Not to extend the conversation, but Ben's comments were right along kind of the lines. I was thinking, when we, as a council, consider an SDD application and the conditions that, you know, are part of it, and Mr. Davidoff touched on it as well, those are part of the approval. Those are the conditions that we approve. And so, the concern is if we start to waive certain conditions, one by one, one association or property as we go, maybe it's not trash pickup, maybe somebody's going to want snow removal from their association, or some other condition that they're going to want an exception for. And once we open the door to that, then we've kind of lost control of the rules and the whole intent of having the conditions in the first place. And as Mr. Williams stated, then it puts us in a position of being, you know, arbitrary and potentially subjective in what we approve and what we don't approve, and have no consistency. But at the same time, there is a concern, and I agree, that, you know, to have 33 with and 33 without, and it's just because we drew the line, doesn't strike me as entirely fair, and makes me as arbitrary as well. So, I think it's worthy of, you know, going back and looking at it to see if we can make it equitable and consider it, in my opinion, unfortunately not in the context of this application, because I don't think just changing one helps the situation, it probably just invites more waiver requests, but I do think it deserves more consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Ms. Kerrigan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Of the 66 units, and you may have said this already, and if you did, I apologize, do we know how many of them are SDDs?
There are 66 developments, not units, but
Right, that's what I meant. Of the 66 developments, half we're servicing, half are not being serviced by us?
I do not know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just curious.
Thank you, Ms. Renfro.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As an alternate, I take my duties pretty seriously and read through your application each and every page, and I do have a question. And I am equally troubled by the arbitrariness of this issue, and read that, and that was one of my notes at my home when I was reading. I do wonder if there's any reason that this applicant could not return if in the future a policy is made and something does change?
Well, you could, if you simply deny the application, the applicant can't come back for at least a year and submit to some more application, but you can waive that condition if you choose. And, I mean, it's also possible, and, you know, it's, where you could write a policy, codify it maybe in an ordinance form that would basically override conditions in condominiums that meet the criteria you set down, but that's a possibility, I don't know for sure if we could really do that. But you could certainly, you know, deny without prejudice.
Okay.
So, they could come back sooner than 12 months, if you wish.
Thank you.
And just to be careful, because Joe and I haven't had a chance to talk about this, what's nagging at me about the idea of having a policy or an ordinance that overrides conditions of approval is, if you remember, every SDD approval is a zoning ordinance, and can only be amended by amending a zoning ordinance, the process we're going through tonight. And I'm struggling with the idea that you can do that in a blanket form by adopting another, that's what was going on in my head, and I just don't have an answer to.
Thank you, Mr. Lea. So, what do you think? Well, it's a bit dry, but we talk trash. So, thank you very much. I think that's all we have from the questions from the council and input from the council. I know some very good points. Every time we say something is somewhat simple or appears to be simple on paper, it's never quite so simple. So, I apologize for the late. Yes, I am reading into the record, letter dated May 11, 2016, from TPZ recommending approval, letter dated May 2, 2016, from DRAK recommending approval, and letter dated May 20, 2016, from CROG, finding no apparent conflict. And just to comment on that before, can you just mention on what TPZ, DRAK, and CROG see when they get their application, and what we see, and why that may be inconsistent at times?
Well, you know, it's unusual for DRAK to comment on something like this. DRAK is a design review committee, but our ordinances require that you refer any amendment to an SDD to DRAK, so they are usually looking at what color or what materials are in a building, not this kind of issue. So, their finding, I guess, should be looked at with that perspective. The TPZ received the documents that you received from the neighborhood, they did not receive comment from the town about the impact it might have on other condominium units in the town. So, they read what the homeowners have written them and thought that that made some sense, but they didn't have it in the context of the larger town.
Okay, thank you. Anything further from the applicant? Oh, come on up. Make sure you state your name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening. My name is Karen Harper. I live at 645 Prospect Avenue, Unit 11. The question, Ms. Kerrigan, I believe, raised was something that I also wanted to ask, was out of the condo associations that do receive trash pickup, how many of them are SDDs? Because I believe another counselor asked the question, "If we had not been an SDD, would we have gotten trash pickup?" And the answer was yes, if I'm correct. So, it's possible that the 33, out of the 33 people that are getting trash pickup, maybe there's two that are SDDs and not 30. So, you wouldn't be faced with 30 requests for waivers, because it would be a different situation. This SDD situation, I think, is one that really needs to be looked at too, in our particular case, because if we are one of just a few associations that actually have that as part of who we are, then you don't have as much to worry about as 33 more condo associations coming in to ask for the waiver. And of course, I agree with all the comments that it really isn't fair. Half of us get, half of the associations get it and half of us don't. But that might be one way to look to see if there's anyone who is similar to us, that they actually, you know, also were an SDD, whereas many might not be. So, that was. And then, the other thing I wanted to say was, if you do go forward and form a committee or try to move forward with how this might be done in the future, if you'd like a person from an association, from the public, to be on the committee and help out, I would love to offer to do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sir, anybody else from the applicant?
So, I'm still Nina Donovan. I wanted to go on the record and just make a few comments on things that were said. Quite frankly, I feel kind of blindsided by receiving the memo from the Department of Public Works about 10 minutes before this meeting, and the fact that, which of course doesn't, didn't provide us with time for response, but the fact that, the number 66 is a pretty large number. I think that sounds ominous almost, or prejudicial. Whereas, in fact, when we did our research on this, there was nowhere near 66 or even 33 units or developments that were, that we were able to understand were at all comparable to our situation, because they either had containers, which is a different story, and involves more, well, it's more units, and it's more labor, or they involved larger numbers, or they involved private, a different situation, perhaps with a private road or something like that. In fact, we don't have a private road, we have a parking lot, so I don't know, to me, that's a distinction, it's just a parking lot. At any rate, we couldn't find anything, so these numbers are quite a surprise to me, and I would be very interested in seeing the list of the 33 or of the 66, and also, if it can be broken down by SDDs and not, that would be even more informative. You know, we don't require the dumpster, as has been stated, and also, to one of the points that was made, of course, we were aware when we purchased, I think I can speak for everyone, that private collection, that we would be paying for private collection. So, it's not as if we're saying, "Oh, we didn't know." No, what we're saying is, yes, we knew, and yes, it's been that way for eight years, and yes, we pay X dollars in taxes, and why can't we, for our 11 units, get that changed? And I think that the small size, and the access, and the no container, and the fact that, that it's, the fact that we don't have a way to respond tonight to the numbers of 33 and 33 that were put out there, makes it hard for us to specifically address that. I would be interested to see John's list and where that came from. I also had one more point, which is that I, I'm not sure that I agree, and maybe that places like Hamilton House that specify hours of trash collection would necessarily mean that it's private collection, as I think Mr. Van Winkle said, or somebody said, I'm sorry. So, I'm not sure, again, I would like to know where they fall in this 33 and, you know, and what their requirements are versus our small request from the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Donovan. Anything else? I see a couple people. I think Mr. Wang was wrong with them.
I would just like to thank the members of the town council who are who offered the perspective of the arbitrariness of our situation. I want to make sure that everybody understands that we worked really hard on this. We did as much research as we could reasonably do without hiring counsel to help us. We read the minutes, actually, of the entire approval process for our condominium project. And there were lots of things that were controversial then, including the architecture and people being concerned about adding multifamily versus single family on that particular location. So there were a number of things that were, I'll call boilerplate, conditions that actually were discussed, and this was not one of them. There's one line attributed to this in the minutes, which I think we included as an exhibit. So, you know, I'm just hoping to understand after this evening how we can proceed in a way that's different than what we did. Because as Nina and Karen just pointed out, and I think we can all agree, we're in the dark with regard to sixty-six or other condo projects. We have absolutely no idea, you know, when they were formed, what conditions were in place at the time. Maybe there are none like us. So if we had had the opportunity to distinguish ourselves and say, well, this is how we're different from this nine and this twelve and this forty, then you all might be feeling a little bit differently about your decision. Because maybe there is a way that's much simpler than we realize, you know, to distinguish ourselves as maybe the only condominium project in town that was built after SDD approval and it just sort of slipped through. I think Ian Warhopdick really articulated that, you know, we have no children in our complex at the moment. We haven't historically had children in our complex. We don't use the school system. There are no other town services that we're really looking for here, except this one thing. And if it is a consideration, we have a parking lot. If you want to refer to the photo in the back, it's not a, it's not a private road. It's a parking lot. If you'd like us to wheel our barrels twenty feet down onto Prospect Avenue, which in my personal opinion would be a disaster, traffic-wise and otherwise. Lots of people use that part of the street for parking from very early in the morning to very late in the evening. You know, that's a separate matter and something we're obviously not going to consider. But I just wanted to thank you for addressing the fact that this does seem arbitrary. And I'm sure you can therefore understand our frustration as taxpayers and voters that, you know, we're not receiving even these services. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cedar. Mr. Barnes?
Let's keep this going. To the town manager, with respect to the comments that we just heard, is it possible to get a list of the sixty-six properties, the ones that are receiving the service and not, and the ones that are receiving the service, how many of them are SDDs?
Yes.
Okay. And can we make that available to the folks here in the audience?
Certainly.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Yeah, Mr. Wang?
Is it still on?
Yes.
All right. Hi. Yeah, my name is Walter Wyman. I'm on Unit 7 of the Prospect Avenue, 645 Prospect Avenue, Room is Woolley Association. I would just want to make one point that, first of all, thank all the community members for taking the time to hearing us on our petition. I see that a lot of the community members are making a point such that it's more of a slippery slope kind of argument, that he is saying that if you are approving our request today, then you have to approve a lot of the other communities. And they also, and some of the communities can, some of them have private roles, some of them require lots of money to accomplish. However, I want to make the point that this is a slippery slope argument, and we don't think this is going to be necessarily the case. I think we ought to consider this kind of situation case by case. In our case, our condo association is very small. Our condo association is very inexpensive to provide this kind of garbage collection. And our private road isn't really much of a private road. It's more of an open area inside of the big road. So there isn't going to be any obstruction. There isn't going to be any sort of danger to the, to the town to provide this kind of service. And to say that by agreeing to, by, to imply that by agreeing to provide this kind of service to our condo association, you're also going to agree to the ones who have dangerous situations, like very narrow private roads in some condo association, is unfair to our community. Because I think in our condo community, we are very small and we're much of a special case in this kind of situation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wang. Okay. Is that it? All right, you're on. Close the public hearing. Close the public hearing. Okay.
Thank you very much, Alexia. Good job. I just want to start with a couple of difficult things that happened in the last couple of weeks. Actually, this is in chronological order. It's not a matter of importance. But we lost a very important member of our, of our community, David Chase. He was a longtime West Hartford resident. I think he was seventy years. Philanthropist and developer left his mark on the greater Hartford area. I just wanted to share a little bit about him. David Chase, eighty-eight, of West Hartford, founder and president of Chase Enterprises, passed away at his home on June 1st, 2016. Born in Kelsey, Poland, he was the son of Leon and Helen, I think, Sielsa. He was, David was a Holocaust survivor, lifelong entrepreneur and philanthropist. He arrived in the United States as a teenager after surviving Auschwitz, Sachsenhausen, and Matouzen concentration camps. During the Holocaust, David and his sister Helen lost their parents and younger sister, in addition to many other family members. After graduating from Weaver High School in Hartford, Connecticut, transferring from Hillier College to the UConn Pre-Law Program, he met the love of his life, Rhoda Kohn. David would frequently remark about how he felt this thunderbolt strike him when he met his wife. And they've been, remained married all this time until his passing. She was a constant source of encouragement. He played a leading role in developing the Hartford skyline, reinvigorating downtown Hartford in the seventies and eighties with the construction of the Gold Building, one corporate center known as the Stiltz Building, 280 Tremble Street. He also built New Haven's Connecticut Financial Center, which is the tallest building in New Haven, and many shopping centers. David was one of the first Americans to invest in Poland after the fall of the Berlin Wall, owing much of his friendship to Pope John Paul II, who asked that he return to Poland to help their transition from communism to capitalism. His Polish investments included the first Polish-American-owned bank, paving the way for his revolutionary infrastructure investment, where he invested in cable television in Poland. He was a tireless philanthropist. His work spanned many different religious, medical, and societal causes. As a man of Jewish faith, he was dedicated to the people of Israel and the victims of the Holocaust. He co-founded the United States Holocaust Museum in Washington, DC, led fundraising efforts for Yad Vashem, and was heavily involved with the Rabbinical College of America, as well as supporting numerous hospitals and universities. Throughout his career, he was awarded numerous honorary doctor degrees across religious barriers with his work for the Foundation for Advancement of Catholic Schools, strongly supported the Anti-Defamation League, and worked on the Red Cross to support both Israel's Mok and David, Adam, and Palestinian Red Crescent Society. His philanthropic work led to friendships with successive presidents and religious leaders, including Jimmy Carter, Le Quellesa, and many others. David was a family man, a loving person that believed in everyone's ability to do good and better themselves. He is survived by his wife Rhoda Chase of West Hartford, Arnold and Sandy's Chase of West Hartford, and Cheryl Chase and her husband Judge Stuart Bear of West Hartford, grandchildren William Chase and wife Dr. Lauren Kopp Chase of West Hartford, Dara Dyer and husband Ross Dyer of West Hartford, Sarah Chase of New York City, Allison Chase of New York City, Melissa Chase of New York City, and Landon Chase of Bloomfield, and great-grandchildren Dylan and Riley Dyer of West Hartford, and Samuel Chase of West Hartford. And he helped other survivors too, in a remarkable way, because he saw the, probably the worst in humanity, and kept going with such an optimism that was very inspirational. And then I also want to take another moment to reflect on the horrible and tragic act of hate and terror in Orlando. We as a community stand in solidarity with the LGBTQ community, with the families and the victims of the wounded, and they are in our thoughts and prayers this night. And I just would like to take a moment and observe. Thank you so much.
Okay. Do you want to go sit with the pants on? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Alex.
Good job.
All right. She will be in Congress someday or something. I don't know. But, or maybe President. Okay. Roll call, Ms. LeBrow. Mr. Barnes?
Present.
Ms. Cantor?
Here.
Ms. Kasperson's absent. Mr. Davidoff?
Here.
Mr. Dodge? Ms. Hall?
Here.
Ms. Carrigan?
Here.
Mr. Wenigret?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
And we have Ms. Renfro as the alternate. Thank you. Number four, Mr. Davidoff?
I move that we accept the minutes and approve them from the Town Council Special Meeting of 5/16/2016, the Town Council Meeting Minutes of 5/24/2016. of 5:16, 2016, the Town Council Meeting Minutes of 5:24, 2016, the public hearing minutes of 5:11, New Park Avenue, on 5:10, 2016, the public hearing minutes, resolution authorizing submission of the Neighborhood Assistant Grant Application of 5:24, 2016.
Second. Motion's been made in seconded, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Number five, public forum. We have no one signed up for the public forum. This is an opportunity to address items on the Town Council agenda that will not, that we will act upon on tonight's meeting, and not subject to a public hearing. Does anybody out there want to comment? I didn't think so. Okay, number six, Mr. Van Winkle.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything in particular to talk about, except for the same thing I talked to you about multiple times. We're all driving too fast. Two weeks ago, we had two families here, with very different roads, talking about how cars speeding on their streets have taken away their front yards, taken away their neighborhoods for their families. I was at both those sites, and lastly, at Antrop Brook Drive, at rush hour, with the police chief, and we stood on their front lawn and felt uncomfortable as cars whizzed by and found things like this on their lawns, were car accidents that happened that hit telephone poles and had other things happen. Every one of us is driving too fast. You have all sped in your car at some point in time. We all know that. And we all need to recognize the impact we have on our neighbors, on our community, when we do that. And so, there's not a whole lot that the town can do to stop you from speeding. We will write tickets, but we don't have enough police officers to catch all the cars that are speeding in West Hartford. The physical changes we make in the streets have really modest impact on speeding. So what I ask for everybody, and I've asked this multiple times, and if you don't listen, I'm going to keep asking it, is for all of us to try to slow down. There's a speed limit on your street, drive the speed limit on your street. Start with your own street, and then try to follow the speed limits on all of our arterial streets where traffic is more dense and more rapid. That's really all I have tonight. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Van Winkle. Ms. Hall.
Thank you. Could you, Mr. Town Manager, just go through what people should expect when they get their tax bill on their cars? Because I, I'm just worried that that word is not getting out, and we should use this opportunity to go over that again.
Yeah, thank you. We get a list of addresses for automobiles from the Department of Motor Vehicles, comes out of their new software. We got that list and saw that we were approximately 500 cars short over what we had last year, which is unusual. We don't see that kind of reduction in our, and we began to look through our list, and we found that none of the school buses that are located in West Hartford were on our list at all. And Ellington called and said that they found them, they were in their community, they had all of the school buses in the greater Hartford region as being domiciled in Ellington. They were delighted by the increase in their tax base, but unfortunately, it was wrong. In your tax bill for your automobile will be a notice that says that if this tax bill is wrong, call us. Because we don't know if you own that car or don't own that car. It's what DMV tells us. If you own a car and you didn't get a tax bill, don't celebrate. Because we are still required by law to charge you 18% interest on your not paying a bill that is due. Regardless of whether we notify you or not, we are still required to charge 18% interest on that payment. So if you don't get the tax bill, call us. If you get a tax bill that doesn't belong to you, call us. We are hopeful that the numbers are going to be okay, but it seems likely, and DMV themselves have sent out a notice saying that there are going to be some errors in the tax bills for automobiles. So if something's funny, just give us a call. You can call the tax collector's office in Town Hall, and we'll help you figure that out.
Thank you, it's a nightmare. Okay, anybody else? Mr. Barnes.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, the, originally the Yukon Purchase and Sale Agreement was on our agenda for tonight, and I believe as of yesterday, it was pushed, I believe, to our next meeting. I was just wondering if you could advise the public as to why that happened.
Sure. At your last meeting, we sent it to the Town Plan and Zoning Commission, they recommended approval. It comes back to this committee. The resolution would appropriate $250,000, which is our first payment to Yukon, until we complete our inspection of the site. We are not in an adversarial position with Yukon. We are attempting to resolve some language issues. You know, the Yukon is selling it to us at a price which is perhaps below what the market price is for that property if it were commercially developed or something. And they are doing that with a provision in it that if we were to flip it to someone at a commercial development price, that they should actually get a portion of that. And we're trying to write that language, and our lawyers and Yukon's lawyers are going back and forth trying to get to all the instances. It's unfortunate that, you know, there are a million ways to sell a property, you know, and after seven years in this agreement, we don't owe them anything, we could flip it after seven years. Well, suppose we did a balloon payment, no payments now, and in seven years you did. So there has to be a whole lot of language in there that covers the things that might happen. And we're close, I expect on the 28th, it will be before you, and be here for your approval. We're just trying to dot the i's and cross the t's here. It's not a, it's not a conflict, and there's no question that we'll be able to bring back to you a purchase and sale agreement, which you will find acceptable.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Anybody else? Okay. Number seven, Mr. Davidoff.
I move that we place items 16 through 21 on the consent calendar.
Second. Motion's been made in seconded, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Number eight, Mr. Davidoff.
Item number eight, I move that we approve an application on behalf of Loomis Willey Homeowners, LWHOA Property Owner of 645 Prospect Avenue, to amend Special Development District Number 125. LWHOA is requesting elimination of condition of approval. Two dot C, solid waste collection shall be the responsibility of the property owner slash manager. If approved, waste and recycling services will be provided by the town of West Hartford.
Second. Motion's been made in seconded. I would like to actually propose an alternate motion, that we, after discussion with some of my fellow counselors, that we deny without prejudice, and we refer to community planning for a further discussion on, a study on the inconsistencies, and looking at policies of this, this issue of trash collection and the inconsistencies that we've seen. I, in a informal discussion, this would, this was, was a, an issue that may not have passed, and I would like to make sure that if it, it doesn't pass, if we do it this way, that you are free to come back at no, without prejudice, before a year, and that we have more data on an understanding. You felt like you didn't have enough information with John Phillips, we also felt that way. We received the, the information back today. We also would like to dig into this a little further, understand why this is happening for this project, all the other projects and future projects. We need to have some understanding. It may be valid that there are inconsistencies at a certain point in time, that that faucet was turned off, but how many STDs are there? So, anyway, that was, that's what I would like to, to do. So, thank you, you're right. All right, so all those in favor of the counter, I need a second first. All those in favor of the counter? Aye. And all those opposed? Okay, motion carries. And then we can go, have a discussion. Does, does anybody want to have a, Ms. Hall.
I just want to point out that, you know, while we can't always fix things that happened in the past, I think it's our duty to make sure we don't compound errors. And I think, had we moved forward tonight with a decision one way or the other, it was going to, you know, just further those inequities. So I think it makes sense for us to all step back and really analyze, how does the town want to move forward? But we don't want to penalize the applicant with waiting a year before they could come back based upon whatever we, we come up with. So I think this was a good solution.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Anybody else? Okay. Seeing that, it's not a roll call vote, right? So all those in, oh, wait, is it a roll call vote? I'm sorry. Okay.
The motion is to deny without prejudice and refer to community planning.
Okay? Ms. LeBrow.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Ms. Cantor.
Yes.
Mr. Davidoff.
Yes.
Mr. Dodge.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Ms. Kerrigan. Mr. Wenigret.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
And Ms. Renfro.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you for your efforts, I appreciate it, and we'll, I'm sure we'll, we'll talk further. Thank you so much. Number nine, Mr. Davidoff. It's, that's actually not our, sorry, but I'm happy to talk to you after, or at another time. You can call me anytime. Number nine, Mr. Davidoff.
I move that we table the resolution authorizing the purchase of the University of Connecticut West Hartford campus property.
Second. Motion's been made in seconded, all those, thank you, Ms. Renfro. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Okay, no discussion. Number 10, Mr. Davidoff.
Number 10, I'd like to make a motion that we set for public hearing and ordinance amending the administrative appeal, administrative approval process applicable to special development districts on July 26 at 6:15 PM, and refer to TPZ and Krag.
Second. Motion's been made in seconded, all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Number 11, Mr. Davidoff.
I'd like to move that we set for public hearing, a ordinance extending the moratorium on the approval of ground-mounted and pole-mounted solar energy systems in residential zones. Public hearing to be set on July 26 at 6:25 PM, and refer to TPZ and Krag.
Second. Motion's been made in seconded, all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Number 12, Mr. Davidoff.
I move that we adopt the resolution concerning the state filing for construction and renovation of science laboratory classrooms at Hall High School.
Second. Motion's been made in seconded. Mr. Van Winkle, would you like to?
Yes. Mayor, this is a resolution that allows the town of West Hartford, the State Town Board of Education, to apply for a state grant under, under our construction rules in the town of West Hartford and with the state. The state has been a participant in most of our new construction or substantial renovation projects of our schools. Historically, we've gotten grants of, from 40 to 80%, 80% on our new Charter Oak School. In this case, you approved in your budget, that was adopted in April, a capital appropriation for the construction of additional science classrooms and other classrooms at Hall High School. That was estimated to be $12.6 million, and about 40% of that was to come from a state grant. Recently, the state adopted a, a bond, or bond legislation that was just adopted by this last session, and the state gave to the town $8 million of that 12.6 for the construction of these science labs. So tonight, you will, you should approve a authorization that the superintendent begin the process for applying for that grant, working with his building committee, begin to do architectural drawings, and make that grant application as soon as those drawings are done. This is necessary for the, the education department to be able to get this grant, and so it's necessary for you to pass this.
Thank you, Mr. Van Winkle. Any comments, questions? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Announcements. I have a couple quick ones. There will be, actually, the interfaith leaders in our community have organized a vigil tomorrow night at 6:00 PM in Blueback Square. And as far as I know, there will also be a Deaf interpreter. I have not heard back yet, I had reached out to somebody, but I have not heard back yet, hopefully there will. And I also, Alexia, I mentioned, we went to a music and movie event, a public event at University of St. Joseph's. It is a, a new, a new program. They are going to be doing five things over the next month. There's music and movies, including the Lego Movie, and it will be open to the public in their courtyard. And it was a really, really wonderfully attended event, and a lot of community outreach, which was great. And make sure that you come to thank Scott Slifka on Wednesday, June 22, 5:30 to 8:30, in the auditorium. Tickets are $35. You can go to www.whtv.org, or call 860-561-1260 to benefit WHCTV and the town that cares. Fun, it will be a fun night, and give recognition to our dear friend and historic leader, Scott Slifka. Anybody else have other announcements? Mr. Barnes.
I have one. Tonight, we received a letter at the council table, and it related to the Tennessee Gas Pipeline. And some of you may recall from, I believe it was last summer, the, the issue came to light probably towards the end of the summer, and we ended up having a public hearing in the auditorium that was very well attended, to hear from Kinder Morgan and Tennessee Gas Company, talking about the project. And under the proposal at the time, it would have required a second or parallel gas line to run right through the MDC property here in West Hartford. And so there was a lot of concern about that, and as a result of that, this council passed a resolution asking for further research and investigation about potential alternative routes for that, for that pipeline, because we felt that that had not been done, that the alternatives had not been explored. Well, Tennessee Gas went ahead and filed a, an application with the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission in the fall of last year, and we just received a letter, looks like it was dated a couple weeks ago, but we just received a letter, saying that Tennessee Gas and Kinder Morgan are withdrawing their application to go forward with the proposed gas pipeline, and the stated reason is, as a result of inadequate capacity commitments from prospective customers, and a determination that the project is uneconomic. So to those of you out there that were aware of this issue last summer, and were wondering what happened to it, we have a resolution, and it looks like Tennessee Gas will not be going forward with the, the project. And so, as of now, there's no gas pipeline coming through West Hartford. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none. Missed an appointment, oh, no, reports from Corporation Council. Mr. O'Brien.
Yes, we don't need executive session, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. O'Brien? Okay, seeing none. Number 15, Mr. Davidoff.
I move we appoint the following people to the following commissions. Appoint Alyssa Norwood to the West Hartford Bloomfield Health District for a term ending 12/31/2019. Appoint Max Duboisson as an alternate to the Clean Energy Task Force. Appoint Mayor Sherry Cantor, Deputy Mayor Leon Davidoff, Minority Leader Denise Hall, and Jim Bergen to the Ethics Commission for a term ending 11/21/2017. Appoint Gordon Binkhurst as an alternate to town planning and zoning for a term ending 12/31/2017. Reappoint Chris Bennett to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for a term ending 12/31/2018. And reappoint Lawrence Josiah to the Veterans Commission for a term ending 12/31/2018.
Motion's been made in seconded, all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Number 22, Mr. Davidoff.
I move adoption of the consent calendar.
Second. Motion's been made in seconded, all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. No communications, no petitions, no executive session, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Sir.
Motion's been made in seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay.[1778.61]